Let the record reflect that the meeting is reconvened with all members present. As we stand for the pledge, I will ask you to remain standing afterwards.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we are standing, I want to recognize someone near and dear to the borough of Madison we lost since our last meeting, and also make some other comments, Barbara Balk, a true dedicated public servant in a way with her volunteer effort. And in a way, she was someone that had Madison in her heart from the day she was born to the day she died. She was born in Madison, Wisconsin, and then settled in Madison, New Jersey, the same year I was born, in 1956. And she was a founder of the Eagle Christmas Fund, but she saw people in Madison in need and worked so hard. And I don't know how many years she was on the Madison Housing Authority and then the Housing Trust, because not only did she see through the Eagle Christmas Fund people in need at Christmas time, but people in need for housing, and she made her passion. And thankfully, her name is on the building, the firehouse apartments, so we can always remember her. So, a moment of silence reflection for Barbara, and also as we're reflecting, Barbara's life is also for those who lost their lives in the storm last week, and those who lost their homes, their family members. Hold me there. If I can indulge in your attention while you're still standing for just a few more minutes, just look around you, the people in this room. And if you made a phone call to 408-8787, think about the voices that answered that phone. As you walked around the streets of Madison, even if your block was in the dark, but you saw the crews up in the bucket trucks. As you walked and saw debris on the streets, you saw our crews collecting at all. As you felt safe in our town, lights out because of our public safety, our police and fire, think about all those people, and let's just give them a good round of applause. Thank you. Minutes for approval, executive minutes of August 13th, 2012.
I move that.
Seconds. It's already been discussed. No call vote.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh...
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And the regular minutes of August 13th, 2012.
I move that.
Seconds. Discussion. We have one, some corrections.
The change is at all place.
All right, anything else? All right, no call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh...
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome all, and some more comments about our past week and what we saw since the last time we met. But before I get to that, I just want to announce the employee for the month of November. And as I announce a employee for the month of November, there will be a recognition at a later date, because the list of volunteers and employees for our past week is going to be incredible, and we will need to recognize them. But Police Officer Michael Mini of the Madison Police Department is our employee of the month for November. His assistant to a handicapped driver changing his tire late at night. The driver sent a letter to the borough expressing his gratitude for Officer Mini's courteous assistance. So, it's always, you know, we always go the extra mile in Madison. Obviously, my greetings to the public will be fairly consistent with other greetings, and I will do things a little bit out of order, because talking about the last week, when I finish up, I want Bob Landrigan to make a report as OEM Coordinator, and then we'll go to our department reports. You know, it's, if I reflect back two weeks ago, when we got up here with Bob Landrigan and Acting Chief Darren Datchison as our coordinator and vice coordinator for OEM, and we presented that check for, from FEMA, you know, we kind of made some light-hearted comments about, you know, the distant memory that the Halloween storm was of a year ago. And regretfully, it is a distant memory, because what happened this past week far exceeded what we saw a year ago. The impact is incredible. But that said, this was a proud moment for the Borough of Madison. If you saw some of my releases or some of my comments, you've heard this before, but what happened for Madison happened long before the rains and winds started a week ago. Under Bob Landrigan's leadership, with Darren Datchison at his side and pulling in department heads and everyone involved, we were prepared for what we saw, thought would be an October hurricane. In fact, we were well-prepared for what far exceeded our expectations. The effort that was put into that was incredible, and so the hours put in. Now, in that week when the storms hit, there's a bunch of us that know each other a whole lot better than we did a week ago from spending endless hours in the OEM room. And I guess one of the things on the wall probably said, "What happens, OEM room stays in the OEM room." But no, it's, it was a core of what was going on, a true dedication, and you talk about how people just stepped up. And now she's going to get mad at me, but I see Fran in the second row, but she's someone, we came close to have to make an executive order to send her home one day, but she just wouldn't go home. For those that called that 408 number, you were not just getting an update for where we were with repairs or where you could go for resources. You were getting a voice that would talk you through. I heard the comments, you know, "Please don't cry, we'll help, we'll get to help out to you." This is what people did in that time of need. They really stepped up and helped every resident that called. And a truly amazing thing with the number of hours put on in that room is the smiles and the positive conversations on the phone were as strong Monday night as that storm hit, as they were yesterday, when we thought we would have been closed for two days, that they were still there manning the phones, still making it all happen. And as I mentioned, as we stood up before, we will have a true recognition for all the volunteers. Something else I want to comment on, one of the lines I used, and it was much easier for people to hear at the beginning of the week, as we had a little bit of power coming on, is whether you're among the first to get power, or if you'll be the last, keep in mind we're all in this together. And when we were mostly in the dark, it was easy to handle that. As we got to 80%, 90%, and now we're at probably 99%, those people that don't have power, we're getting a little frustrated. And I think for any of our volunteers, any of our crews that were out there working that heard some of that frustration, remember, it was not their heart talking, it was not their lack of appreciation talking, it was the dark, cold house that had finally gotten to them. As I stopped at one of the churches yesterday, they said, you know, "There's just so how many, so many games of Monopoly you can play by candlelight." And it was, and so if you heard any of that frustration, please understand that was nothing more than frustration. Madison showed its best, and I was in one neighborhood, and they, they let me know their frustration. And then, in the last 24 hours, they also let me know through emails how much they appreciated what we did for them. We are hearing from all our neighbors, there is not a town in this state that responded better than Madison did. And so when you see, as I mentioned before, as you see the electric crew out there, as you see our Department of Public Works out there, thank them, because they put in endless hours. Yes, they're paid to do that, but I know 16 hours a day out there in the street, I couldn't do it, pay or no pay. So please show your appreciation. This was a tough week, but a great week for Madison. And one of the, another quotes that embarrassed her one more time, Fran put on the board, and I've shared this already, but I thought it was great. This is from Henry Ford. "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." And that is Madison in a nutshell. We saw success. So thank you for all. Bob, if you could give me, share your report?
Sure. Okay, you just have to excuse me, I normally don't read, but I'm a little tuck it out this week. And it's not that long, I promise, it's a couple of pages here. Okay, "The estimated cost of the damage to the Borough of Madison and its residents is in excess of $20 million." I reported that up to FEMA, they needed to know that, and that's only preliminary number. Of that, 30 homes suffered major damage, another 100 suffered what FEMA would consider minor damage, to us would be probably major to individual homeowner, and another 2,500 other homes were affected in one way or another. Service being ripped off the walls, roof broken, a window broken. Thank God, there were no confirmed storm-related deaths or injuries. In regards, I felt it important to give everybody kind of a chronological run-through of what happened, just to show the preparations and how quickly the borough responded. First of all, the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, was opened before the storm. We were there when the storm hit. Immediately following the storm, all roads in and out of town were blocked in several locations. If we wanted to, we couldn't get to a hospital, it was impossible. Additionally, many of the secondary roads were blocked, and you couldn't get to some individual neighborhoods. If somebody required emergency services, ambulances, fire engines, police cars couldn't get through, they were blocked. By day two, by the end of day two, several of the major roads were open, and we can thank DPW and the crews that they hired for doing that. And an overall assessment of the town was completed. We kind of knew at that point where we stood, and work had begun with JCPN to re-energize the feeder lines. By Wednesday, all the major roads were cleared, we could now get out of Madison and get to a hospital if we needed to. Areas isolated by, you know, individual neighborhoods that in town were isolated, we were making headway, we actually got into a lot of them. And one of the feeder lines was restored, and that goes in no short part to the efforts of the mayor, Administrator Cody, and Jim Burnett. What they did behind the scenes, someday if you get me enough Everclear or beer in me, I'll tell you the stories. By Thursday, the work had begun rebuilding the infrastructure. You know, if you think about it, Wednesday, Monday we had the storm, by Thursday we were already starting to rebuild, and several of the neighborhoods had power again. By weekend, 75% to 85% of the town had power. And as of tonight, one week later, virtually, I would say 95% of the town is powered up. I think one of the last streets is my neighborhood. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I'll let you know when I get home tonight. Okay, in regards to power, and I can thank Jim for putting this together, what I will say is this, the goal immediately following the storm was to get as many residents' power as quickly as possible. That means if a neighborhood had minimal damage, you know, regardless of where you were in that town, you turn on the power, that neighborhood got power. The goal was to get as many people up and powered as quickly as possible. And also in line with that, you have to remember, we have pine acres, sunrise assisted living, God forbid they went without power for a long time. Those residents of those facilities would have to be evacuated, so those were our goals, and we accomplished it. We, you know, the triage process is very simple, get the feeder lines back, establish power to all the circuits, and thanks to Jim and the electrical superintendent, I'm having a...
Mike Diana.
My piano, don't let my mind shot. I got a good lesson in electrical circuits, how to read that map, it's incredible, it's like a spider going out. No short part to their help. Crews needed to walk each of those circuits to see where it was safe, what neighborhoods could be started and what couldn't be. One of the comments we heard was, "Well, my neighborhood has power, why don't I?" Well, Fran and I learned quickly the answer that we had to give. We repaired, you know, we restored the power to the senior facilities, we repaired service lines that were lost that served multiple family residents. I mean, you can see what's going on here. It's get as much done as quickly as possible to get the benefit to the most residents. Unfortunately, and I won't go through the whole list, I don't want to go on too long, but some of the areas of town that suffered a lot of damage, unfortunately, you know, had to wait. You know, it's a sad fact of when you go through a process like this, you know, the town has never suffered anything like this before, but in the end, everybody is up and running within a week, no major fatalities, no major injuries. One thing we did learn, as time went on, and the mayor alluded to this, and as the scope of the damage was better understood and as the work began, we were able to give those people calling a better idea, a better timeframe for when the repairs could be affected. When the whole town's down, somebody calls them, "I want to get my power back," what are you going to say, a week, two weeks? You know, you don't know at that point, you give your best estimate. As time went on, those dates and those timeframes became much better. During and after the storm, a lot went on behind the scenes, and God bless the guys out in the field that did the work, but a lot of other things happened. And like the mayor said, when we have that formal recognition, these individuals will be noted. But just to give you an idea, we opened two shelters, warming stations, generator lending program was started, where neighbors who had generators gave them in to give to those who needed. Through the Health Department, we reached out to, we talked with outreach programs, Meals on Wheels. So it wasn't just the physical damage that was taken care of. You know, we looked after the residents, those who needed, you know, guidance, counseling, we took care of that. And Carmelo, thank you for going out to the residents of the senior facilities and looking after them, that was very much appreciated, they were in need. We hired line crews from other states, including Louisiana and Delaware, and one of those Louisiana guys wrestled alligators. We secured additional fuel supplies, while other boroughs were running low, we had what we needed, thanks to our new, I guess we're called natural gas trader or gas trader?
Come on, you're the trader.
We arranged, we're in the process of arranging a mobile claim center. Several individuals who, again, are sitting up at the front of the room, and over at the side there, is arranging bus transportation, along with a certain woman sitting right back there, so I'm going to embarrass you again. Tomorrow, and for the duration of that, the Morris-Nessus line is out, we will have three 55-passenger buses that will leave Madison at 7:00 a.m. from the lot right behind the police station, take people into the city, and bring them back, a round trip at a cost of $20. Now, I hate to break the Jersey trans, but that's cheaper than what they charge for their trains. I don't know any other towns that are doing it, but we're doing it, and the cost, like I said, is $20. We were competing with other towns for materials, we got what we needed. There was a lot of arm bending, I have a nickname for some of these people, called the Scroungers, they went out and bribed people with pizzas. They stayed on site, they got the stuff that we needed, we got the job done. And finally, what I want to say is, I just received word tonight that finally Morris County has been declared a disaster area by FEMA now, and residents can apply for FEMA assistance. I'm going to help those residents, I mean, I do it for the borough, I'll figure out a process by which we can, residents can come to me, and I'll help them get, if possible, FEMA assistance. And now some thanks. Told you I wasn't going to go too long, I promised. You know, while we owe a great deal of debt to those in the field, and everybody was, and everybody saw them, I mean, you know, you talk about DPW Electric, God bless them, you know, the police, fire, and ambulance corps, they were out there, they were doing what they had to do, but there are a lot of people behind the scenes. You know, Darren Datchison, you know, he's the chief of police, but he was also the assistant OEM coordinator. I mean, he came up with the concept of the generator lend-lease program. He had my back a lot of times, I mean, decisions were being made on the fly, and you know, he made sure that I wasn't going off on a tangent, like when we had to shut down the gas stations, you know, he made sure that it was done right, and I thank him for that. Chief Lou DeRosa, you know, he's a quiet leader, he's a good man, but if you need anything done in that operations center, or anything about emergency operations, you could ask Chief Lou, he knew. You know, we had a boatload of people manning the phones, two of them are sitting right here, Jeannie Tsukamoto, Rob Catalinello, you know, they actually took in the calls one or two days. Now Ray Cody and Jim Burnett, now, like I said, you get me a couple of beers one day, and I'll tell you the stories when everything settles down, but their ability to get the vital materials needed to get the work done can't be measured. I mean, without what they did, our road crews and electric departments could not have completed the work the way they did, and they still had to run the business of the borough. So I think they deserve a large debt of gratitude. Erin and Megan Cody, who not only answered the phones, but when we instituted the lend-lease program, they just stood up and managed the whole thing, made everybody's job very easy. You know, they worked with the fire department, and today, what they started, the fire department is actually carrying on, so thanks to them. One of my squad members, Jen Brunz, she's a mother of three, she was down there every day, and even came up today with her son, you know, he's in a, he's in a stroller. She sat with me, and we continued to answer phones, and one of the days when she left, we were walking across the street and a medical call went out. She had just come home from a wake, and was dressed for a wake, she put on her coat, and off we went to the medical call. You know, she has three little kids at home, and she did that. And finally, Fran Boardman, she had a name on her, over her seat, it was called the Doer. She got it done, her and her daughter, and boy, that was a dynamic that you had to see. But they did a wonderful job, and the borough owes Fran a great debt of gratitude. And finally, the mayor. And what I'll say is this, you know, I've been through other events, but what I'll say is this, Mayor Conley, you handled this with a level of class that is to be commended. You did the right thing for Madison, you went out, you met with the people, you took a lot of the criticism and the heat to make the rest of all work easier. You sat there with us, you even answered the phones a few days, so I real, you're sitting there saying thank you to everybody, but this borough owes a great deal of thanks to you, so thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and...
And that's the end of my report.
Certainly makes it easy when you have a great team, and in the category of no rest for the weary, as Bob is still managing the recovery from Hurricane Irene, he has been preparing for the nor'easter that's supposed to hit Wednesday, so we are prepared for that. And the other thing, which once, hopefully, we'll see at some point soon, things settle down, we were great, but that doesn't mean we can't do better. So we will get together and take the input and figure out how we can do that even better. Now is not the time, but there will be a time to do that. Again, thank you. Now, our department reports, our committee reports, public safety, Ms. Tsukamoto?
Yep, thank you. I would also like to thank all the employees and volunteers for their excellent work before, during, and after the storm, especially those, including police, fire, public works, and electric utility employees and others, who put themselves in harm's way during the storm to protect the residents and their properties. We just can't thank you enough. So, once again, a big thank you to all those employees and volunteers. As you will probably know, that the hurricane impacted blood supply in the region, the Red Cross is urging residents to donate blood to support the blood needs of those affected by the hurricane. I ask residents to visit redcrossblood.org for information and to make an appointment for donation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Facilities, Dr. Esposito?
Yes, I'm not sure I can add more to what Bob said, but you know, the superstorm Sandy did hit our New Jersey area with a vengeance. The crews were amassed the next day, including electrical workers from that estate and local electricians, in conjunction with tree trimmers who went around town in a synchronized fashion to get the electrical grid back up and running again. Jersey Central was there helping, they had at least a 15- or 20-man crew working on our main lines into the town, and they worked expeditiously with our electric utility workers to get that started up, so by Wednesday evening, we had at least some power into the downtown area, and by Wednesday night, we had some other areas that were energized. So with the cooperation between those two areas, we did get the job done, and done very well and very expeditiously. I want to have special thanks again to the mayor, our fellow council who volunteered their time and energy to go out there and look at things and answer phones, and to help and volunteer their time to help the citizens of Madison. There were close to 100 poles that were either crippled or destroyed in the storm, and they all had to be replaced, some had transformers on them, some had multiple wiring, primary and secondaries, as well as cable and telephone lines. So crews just went around a tree, guys went first, then the utility pole placements came next, and then our utility workers came up and made the final connections. In fact, they are still out there now, working on their last areas that were hit the hardest, that had the most damage done to their poles and wires. I also want to thank the volunteer workers at the shelters, who helped some of the displaced individuals to keep warm, to keep safe. Although they were somewhat upset of being displaced, they had a place to go, and volunteers made them feel at home in there, so I really express my dear appreciation for that as well. There are still some neighborhoods out there, they still don't have power and still don't have heat. As the mayor mentioned before, you know, Madison is a very neighborly town, so if you know of a neighbor that needs heat, whether, whoever they are, I'm sure that you'll be, do whatever it takes to help them out, especially with the elderly and the infirm. The other thing is the water, it's safe to drink, safe to use, there was been no problems with the pumps of the waters that were running, so the water is in good shape and no problems. And then, just as a side note, and has nothing to do with the storm, although I'm sure we have other reports about the storm, the LED lights were placed on Cook Avenue Plaza, so if anybody wants to go by and take a look there and see, those are something that we are looking for into the future, to help kind of cut our costs down as we go along. So it's, right now, it's a very early testing, and if you want to take a look, or anybody wants to take a look, just drive by the Cook Avenue Plaza parking lot, and you'll see the new lights that are up there. Again, thank you for everyone who was involved. Of course, we'll have to mention Fran, because she was there answering the phones and kept her daughter in line, so thanks to everyone that was involved with all the help, and hopefully our next little minor nor'easter comes on Wednesday, won't be as terrible. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Links?
I have, uh, thank you.
Finance and Borough Clerk, Catalinello?
Thank you, mayor. All Madison polling locations will be open for the November 6th general election from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. All locations have power and heat and will operate as planned. Displaced voters can vote at any polling location on a provisional ballot, or contact the county clerk at morriselections.org for information about voting electronically. Please call the borough clerk for additional information or any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan?
That was my report.
And Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, mayor. During the storm this past week, the Health Department established and organized the warming center at the ambulance corps this year. A second warming center was prepared in the event that we had too many people at the ambulance corps building, and that was down at the civic center. So I wanted to give special thanks to Lisa Gula, who was just... So I wanted to give special thanks to Lisa Gula, who has just started as our health officer and she's really been thrown into this job, and Flo Rice, our nursing director, who made this feat possible. Thanks to Marlene Dolan, who's sitting back there, and Christine Schessler, who manned the station and shelter, and Christine Schessler, who went above and beyond and made homemade chicken soup for the residents at the warming center. They were very appreciative. I brought pizzas over and so they had a really nice meal, they had homemade chicken soup and pizza that night. Also, I want to thank Marilyn and Joanne, who work at the health department. They just kept everything running by Flo and Marlene and Lisa and the rest of them were all running around doing what they needed to do. But the work of the health department is just going onwards, we need to go out there, our sanitarians need to go out there to our contract towns, make sure all the restaurants and the schools are safe for all the residents, and that's exactly what has been happening. We got a report tonight from Ray that we actually had to go into Chatham and do sanitarian work and look at restaurants in Chatham Borough as well. So of course, the health department will keep on monitoring and making sure everything is going well. I'd like to make a couple of comments, I know that everybody's been saying thank you, but I just want to talk about the wonderful work that went on this week and just express my pride in the employees and the residents of this town, okay? On three separate occasions this week, I rode, I called David Maines and I rode with him, David is superintendent of Public Works, I wanted to see what the devastation actually was, and I was absolutely appalled on that first day that I went out with him, and that was Thursday morning, and we spent a lot of time going from one street to the other. And a few days later, again, I went out and I was absolutely amazed at the amount of work that was already accomplished. And then on Saturday, we went out again and I thought, oh my gosh, now they're just doing cleanup. You know, they've gotten every tree, every street in Madison wide open, and it was so wonderful to see because as we were riding through the different neighborhoods, all the kids were out celebrating Halloween, and it just looked normal and they were laughing and giggling and collecting their candies, so it was very awesome to see. So I can't say enough about the employees of DPW, the electric and water and sewer departments, who accomplished a feat that seemed daunting and impossible. They just went to work, they did their job and worked until they could not because of darkness. And I just want to say my personal thanks to all of you. So special thanks also, in no special order, is Bob Landrigan, God bless him, Darren Dashin, and for their leadership in the emergency management group, and to the great group of first responders who helped each other and they just helped each other and did whatever was needed to be done. Can't say too much about Ray Cody and Jim Burnett, who spent every single day and night at OEM headquarters. What they did was extraordinary to help the residents of Madison, but they went beyond helping others by helping other towns that were not as prepared as Madison, and thank you very sincerely for your leadership in that. And of course, we're going to embarrass Fran Boardman again because whenever I went there, she was there with Nicole. Just answering that phone and helping and soothing residents, and that's the most important thing, is how she was able to soothe the residents who were very distraught. The other people that I want to thank are all the wives, the mothers and the fathers and the families who shared their loved ones with us this week, who were helping to put Madison back to normal. I know from personal experience how it feels to worry about your loved ones in possible danger, working in extreme weather, so thank you to all those families and all those wives who had to take care of everything at home themselves. My last comment is this, people helping people is what Madison is all about. There'll be stories told about neighbors cooking hot meals for residents who did not have power as quickly as others, sharing their warm houses to the YMCA, opening their doors to anyone who needed to be warmed and use showers, to the library who warmed and entertained the residents over the weekend. This is what we're all about, this is Madison, and thank you very much, everyone, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody sitting here at this table, I appreciate it.
And now we have to segue into real business again.
Yeah, right.
I'd love to say immediate adjourned after all the great comments. Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council have received 28 storm-related emails since last Monday.
And now we'll move into the invitation for discussion, one of two. A reminder, we have several ordinances up for hearing, and so it is during the hearing you get to comment on those if you are here for the hearing related to the RV storage unit. When we get to that one, that will be tabled, so that will not move forward at this time. And so if you want to comment things on the agenda discussions, we include the Hurricane Sandy update, which we pretty much covered, but we'll talk about the taxing utility payments related to that, police department promotional ordinance, and business personal property taxes, and you may also comment or ask questions on any of the resolutions. As usual, keep your comments to three minutes or less. As you step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and the topic or resolution, the agenda discussion or the resolution you are speaking on. Lisa.
Lisa Ellis, 46 Britton Street. I just want to thank you as a spoiled Madisonian. I have to say, I never felt, I wasn't even cold. Was able to order pizza by Wednesday night. We are so blessed, and I can't thank the mayor and this council, Bob Landrigan, OEM, police, fire, DPW, Ray and Jim, the health department, the ambulance squad, our wonderful, amazing volunteers, and Mike Piano, and our outstanding electric department. I've been talking to people online and to family and friends from other towns and other communities, and people hanging out at Starbucks from other towns. My dad still lives in Harding. A lot of these towns have not even seen a Jersey Central power and light truck yet in their neighborhoods, Roxbury, I've talked to people all over the state, people might not have power for two, three weeks, my friend down the shore might not have it for a month. We are so lucky and so blessed to live in this community, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's not a house for sale by January, and that there's enormous bidding wars, because I know everywhere I go, I talk about what a phenomenal place this is, and that's due in large to the wonderful people that sit here and work behind the scenes, and I just, I can't thank you enough. Also, I know today, the junior school student council under Stephen Finkelstein has reached out to the mayor and to Mrs. Sukamoto and to me about finding a way to sort of pay it forward. You know, what can we do for these other communities that aren't as lucky as we are? And for the few people left here still that may have needs. So hopefully, we can work together as a school district and mayor and council and everybody else to try to find a way to coordinate, you know, some relief efforts going forward. We have one teacher who lives out in Staten Island and commutes here, and he's trying to get an effort for his community together. So, you know, I don't doubt for a minute that we will succeed there too in paying it forward, but I just wanted to thank you all again for your outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else wishing to, Tom?
Thomas Biddinger, 20 Rolling Hill Court. I would like to echo, I think the comments that were made here, I would like to recognize, I think, Mayor, OEM in particular, the planning that obviously had to go on in advance demonstrated, I think, what could be accomplished, and it was in the execution, all the management of that, I think, the mayor, the OEM, the council, the borough administrator and the assistant have done an outstanding job in terms of it. Just a personal anecdote, yesterday, I walked down to the library because we were opening up and I helped close it at the end of the day, and there was an electric truck at 8:00 still going down the street with the lights staring at the wires to see, you know, can something be done. In the afternoon, I watched while they worked on Garfield Avenue, there were three trucks trying to replace poles and lines that were down, and I think anybody that complained because they didn't have service because people weren't trying should have been there to watch, and I would recommend you send people out to do that, because there were like four individuals from Mike Piano's department, where trying to string the wires, trying to put the pole in place on top of, you know, the boom truck, pulling lines one at a time. It was not like turning the switch on and off. Literally, it was a work of art as well as science that they were demonstrating, it was just amazing, and I think anybody that watches this, it's a wonder that it was done that quickly. So I want to personally commend as being a beneficiary of that particular planning and organization for what was done during this particular storm. You really do deserve a great compliment. Just an aside on the library, over the weekend when the power was restored and we were able to open up on Monday, I think we were, as Ray knows, overwhelmed, I think Friday, Saturday we had extended hours, Sunday we pushed the hours as well, and I think over the weekend, I asked the door counters just how many people had gone through the door, there were over 2,000 people that had spent time in the library, either getting their cellphones recharged, working with their computers, doing entertainments with their kids, keeping them busy. I will acknowledge, or just add one other additional comment, the librarians tell me that they got thanks from people from other towns, that Madison was open and providing a service. They were coming from Chatham Township, from Morris Town, et cetera, and using the facilities. They said they were not able to do it in their own hometown, some people didn't even extend the hours, and so they recognized, I think, what was being done, and I think it's a compliment, I think, to people willing to work together and provide that. So thank you very much on a personal basis.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Fran?
Here we go. She's going to start. Hey, Carmel, you better pass this down.
Why?
Get ready. She's going to start.
No, I'm not going to. I heard that. I just want to take this opportunity, my name is Fran Boardman, and I am a Madison resident, I'm also a borough employee. I had the opportunity this week to spend many countless hours with a OEM captain, commander that was, that did an exceptional job, and on behalf of myself and the borough residents, I want to thank you personally, Bob Landrigan, because without your knowledge, without your support, without your preparedness to get us through this, we would still be in the dork. So I'm going to say no more, because then I will start crying, but I do want to thank you personally. You are an outstanding man, you went home to a cold house, to a dark house, to know that you experienced not only what we went through in our OEM center, but what our residents experienced at home as well, and you, I think, are still without light and heat and electricity. But from the bottom of our hearts, thank you very much for all that you did to get us to where we are today.
She didn't go.
Before I call for the next person, I just want to make this comment while it's on my, I bet you there are governing bodies throughout the state right now that are trying to figure out, how can they avoid having a meeting because they are afraid that their residents are going to come up there and tell them what they did wrong? I think what we've heard so far is a testament to Bob's leadership and everyone's leadership in this town of how great a job it is that we can do this, so thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on anything on the agenda?
Can I say something? If you have to, after the public.
See, now I close this part of the agenda, or I close this part, I'm losing track here, go ahead, Mr. Cody.
I just wanted to highlight, I know Bob is too modest in terms of what he coordinated with the mayor to help other towns, and it's a story I think that needs to be told. With Jim's help, we were able to get from Tennessee 8,300 gallons of gasoline and from a local supplier in Orange, New Jersey, Mitchell Supreme, that's a plug for them because they really bailed us out, we were able to get 6,000 gallons of diesel. Our tanks didn't, were very low, and we had no fuel source for our vehicles, we had chewed through it and couldn't get resupplied, so we actually rented a truck from Knoxville, Tennessee, and overnight, they came 1,600 miles, we found a vendor in Tennessee that would sell to us at a price consistent with what people are paying at the pump here, and when it got here, after we topped off our tanks, we had excess fuel, and we contacted our neighbors and were able to help Wharton, which was out of fuel for its police and fire, Dover, New Jersey, which was out of fuel for its police and fire, Morris Township, which was out of diesel fuel, and Chatham Township, which is out of gas and diesel fuel. So that was one initiative that helped four other towns and probably 50,000 residents were serviced through those communities, and those are large, Dover in particular is a large community. Chatham Township reached out for help when they saw that we were making some progress by bringing, with Jim's help again, line crews from outside the state of New Jersey, we brought crews from, 11 man crew from Louisiana, and we brought a five man crew in from Delaware to supplement our existing employees. Chatham Township hadn't seen any JCPN L employees, so they asked us how we did that, and we got together and with the help of the Public Power Association, we put together 11 man line crew, not taking away from Madison's effort, but we were able to identify 11 man crew from Milltown, New Jersey, and got JCPN L to hire them at their expense and dedicate that crew to Chatham Township, and now there's lights coming on in Chatham Township, and when they had called, 20% up and they were 80% down, and now they're making progress because of the efforts of Madison to help them. Today Harding called and said, we heard what you did for Chatham, can you help us? We found crews in South Carolina, and we are working with JCPN L and Harding Township to assist them with line crews that would be dedicated to help our neighbors in Harding get back into power. And as we finish up our efforts here in Madison, our goal is to free up our crews, and rather than have them return to their home states, we're going to help them and assist getting them placed through JCPN L to our neighbors to put more boots on the street to get help for our residents in other towns who are our neighbors. The charter bus initiative started today around 3:00, and it's pretty amazing that Fran was able to, after we called 20 bus companies, and by the end of the day, we had three charter buses, and we said, why don't we put a plan together? And rather than keep it for ourselves, we threw an NEXO from our police department, identified both Chatham's, Harding and Forum Park, and have extended an invitation for their residents to come to our parking facility tomorrow for free parking. We're going to waive their parking enforcement rules to get on a bus so that they can resume their normal workday at a very reasonable price, less expensively than New Jersey Transit, and that'll be a total volunteer operation. These are the tickets we just picked up from Staples that we're going to be using tomorrow morning at 6:00, and we envision we're going to have a lot of people, and this is going to be until transit resumes normal operation, I see this growing to be a very large operation helping our neighbors, and these are the residents who use our train station, Forum Park in particular, and Harding, and they don't have a train station, and the fact that they're here every day to use our trains, but the trains aren't running, we thought it was a good neighbor policy to help them get to work when the trains aren't running. Chatham and Chatham Township called us in the middle of this, that their senior van had broken, and they needed help and they lost a driver. Could we help them? We loaned them our senior van because we weren't running our regular route so they could deliver meals on wheels. The, you know, extended their hours, waived their membership requirements, and we had residents that we notified from the surrounding towns about coming on down for hot showers and stress relief and bring the kids. Same way, Tom Biddinger and Nancy were great at the library, they extended their hours, their staff traveled great distances when it's hard to get gas, and their normal hours on Sundays are two to five, one call. And their normal hours on Sundays are two to five, one call, not a problem. They extended the hours. They heated the building. They became a charging station. They got Wi-Fi up. All things under great stress. And these are things that would just happen on the fly. The donation of the generators was Darren Datchison happened to see it on another site and said, "This seems like a great thing." And Bob said, "Go for it." And Erin, my daughter, was happening to be available, and she ended up in the fire department. We ended up with, I don't know, 50-something donated generators that are currently out helping families who don't have heat tonight get some warmth and light in their life. So it's a wonderful story that we, each day, we're doing something new. And it's not over here until we get everybody in Madison back into power. And I think that's what the mayor was trying to say, is we're not beating our chests saying we did a great job. Until every resident in Madison has heat, the job is not done.
Thank you. Segues nicely into our update. And we have a resolution 265, 2012. Please recognize that at the very basic level, November 1st probably slipped past you very quickly because of everything going on. And at a more involved level, of the ability to get to Borough Hall, the ability to get to your bank, maybe transfer money or whatever. So a stress point for our residents. So we have a resolution that will extend the date when interest kicks in on late payments. So that will extend it to the end of November. Any other updates or anything we need for, on Sandy? Okay. Police Department promotional ordinance?
As you're aware, we have created a comprehensive police promotional ordinance. It covers, really, from soup to nuts. It covers from the hiring of patrol officers all the way to the promotion of chief. Prior to this ordinance, there was no ordinance that dealt with police promotions or the hiring process. It was all done through rules and regulations in the police department. And what this promotional ordinance does is it has testing components, oral and interview components, record review, psychological and physical testing. And basically what it does is it sets forth the rules of the game so that anybody who wants to become a police officer in Madison or any police officer who wants to get promoted to sergeant, lieutenant, captain, or ultimately chief, knows what the rules are, what's expected of them, what will be used as a criteria. And so this is gonna be on for introduction this evening and hopefully passage on the 26th of November so that you will have a comprehensive promotional ordinance in place that will really, I guess, set, you know, set the rules of the game for all hirers and promoters. It also covers all the hiring of police officers and what's expected of applicants to come to the Borough of Madison.
Thank you. And as mentioned, this is ordinance 37, 2012, which will be listed for introduction to the full hearing on November 26th. Any comments or questions? Jamie?
I just want to say that it is very important for us to have a well-thought-out, consistent and documented process for the hiring and promotion for the police department. The testing and hiring procedures that Matt just talked about are very similar to the past practice that we use in the police department. In addition to the testing by an outside agency, the new promotion process places lots of emphasis on employee performance as well as the involvement of the governing body and the administrators. And we all thought those things are very important for the police department.
Thank you. Business personal property taxes, a resolution supporting a bill that is now working through Assembly, Assembly Bill 3393, which if we don't get this through, we don't get the support, we could, another loss of a valuable revenue stream for not only Madison, but every municipality in the state.
What would happen to Madison is it's approximately $252,000. This, this new law that is currently in the Assembly, and it's going to the Senate as Senate 2324, which is going to go along with this particular resolution, okay? Happened, and it was based on a recent tax court opinion. Over 100 municipalities know that they entered 2013 without business personal property tax revenues. That will cost property taxpayers well in excess of $8 million unless these matters change. More municipalities will lose more millions in the future. So in response to that action, Assemblyman Ralph Computo has introduced Assembly 3393, which will provide better direction to the courts regarding the legislature's intent to protect residential property taxpayers when laws regarding tax, state taxation of telecommunications providers were reformed in 1997. And this is based on a court case that took place between Verizon and, I can't remember.
Hopewell.
Hopewell Township. Yeah, okay. So now Verizon has noticed, notified the Borough of Madison that $252,000 of telecommunications equipment will be unilaterally removed from our rolls in 2013. So I think it's very important that we send this resolution. The League of Municipalities has recommended that we support this resolution and support whatever is needed to be done to fight this, this particular thing.
Any comments or questions? Yes?
So Verizon notified us that we're gonna lose whatever, $255,000 from them. I thought this only applies when, in the case that Verizon no longer supplies services to over, to under 51% of our residents. Is that the case right now in Madison?
Well, that's, if I could, that's the problem. Verizon pushed the bill through the legislature that says they unilaterally make a determination that if they don't serve 51% of the users in the market. And it's based on their certification. So they sent us a letter saying, with no detail, no backup or anything, just said, "If, as of this date, we no longer serve 51%, take us off the tax rolls." We wrote back and said, "We want the detail to document what your service level is to support your request." Under the legislation that they pushed through the legislature and this tax court decision, they don't have to provide us any data. They just make a self-serving declaration that we no longer fit this, and they are exempt from the taxation. The revenue here is technically, I won't say it's not a loss. What happens is, and I use the example, and I think we've heard it before, that if you go out to dinner with 10 people and the bill's $100 and the 10 people split it evenly, it's $10 apiece. What happens here is Verizon no longer wants to be at the dinner table. So if that same bill, that's $100 instead of having 10 people splitting the bill, now it's gonna be split between nine people. So what they're doing is taking this tax, because we're still gonna have the same amount of cost to operate the government, we now have, one of our payers has stepped out of the picture. So that obligation has now been unfairly placed as a burden onto the rest of the taxpayers. So we think that's unfair, and we think we should contest it, and the league is recommending. And we're one of approximately 100 communities that Verizon has done this to. And we feel it's challengeable. And there's an appeal that Hopewell has asked each community, which we're participating in currently for $200 apiece times 100. So it's $20,000 now defense fund to fight Verizon on this matter. And simultaneously, there's a legislative effort to correct what we think is a nonjustice, an injustice, and make Verizon pay, or at least provide us with the information so we can make a determination.
Second question, Ray, is that how much revenue do we generate outside of this from Verizon per year?
From Verizon?
Yeah.
Not as much as we used to because the 175 Park Avenue, which was Verizon, is now Realogy, and they're out of that scenario. This may be, I mean, all they have technically in here is the switching station on Main Street, opposite the Stop &amp; Shop, that building with the sandbags in front of it currently.
What about the cell towers?
Cell towers, they pay us, that's lease revenue. We get approximately $46,000 to $48,000 a year based on a lease, and that was just renewed for a multi-year period. But that's a competitive, you know, they get space, the renting space from us on the cell tower.
As you know, you probably figure why I ask the question is if we get other sources of revenue from Verizon, this is not good practice to challenge them to do whatever it is. But it doesn't seem like that we're getting that much revenue anymore from Verizon.
The only revenue is the lease, and they're getting a benefit of location on our cell tower. And they were very anxious to get it.
Very minimum now.
Yes.
Plus, I think the value of that cell tower would not be affected by ours. They're not gonna be...
They signed a lease already. We have a binding lease for the next 30 years. They can't walk.
Yeah. All right, so this is part of the consent agenda. Moving on for ordinances for hearing.
Ordinances 32, 2012 through 35, 2012, scheduled for hearing tonight, were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the council held on October the 10th. Ordinance 36, 2012, was introduced at the meeting of October the 22nd. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting.
As a motion to the table.
Motion to the table. Yeah, open it, yeah. Right.
I call up the ordinance of second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 32, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison rescinding. Ordinance 3-90 and 5-91, amending Chapter 134 entitled Parking Lots of the Borough Code to provide for parking fees for recreational vehicles.
And as noted, this, there will be a motion to table, but I will open the hearing. For anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 32-2012. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Motion to the table.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance 33.
Okay, ordinance 33, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $9,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of two pole-mounted speed monitor devices.
I open the hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 33-2012? Seeing none, I close the hearing. accordance with the law.
Ordinance 34, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $3,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of two dispatch chairs.
I open the hearing for ordinance 34-2012. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 34-2012.
A second.
Council discussion.
Links? Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare the aforementioned adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 35, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $2,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of one crime scene camp.
I open the hearing for anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 35-2012. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 35-2012.
A second.
Council discussion. Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare the aforementioned adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance, file ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 36, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 75 of the Borough Code entitled Building Construction to Establish Hours for Construction and Demolition Activity.
I open the hearing for ordinance 36-2012 for anyone in the public wishing to comment. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Second.
Council discussion. Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare the aforementioned adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now this is time for invitation for discussion number two. And this is when you can comment on anything, not restricted to the agenda. But once again, same rules apply, three minutes or less. When you step up the lectern, please state your name, your address, and your time will start. With those rules, is there anyone wishing to discuss anything? Sam?
Sam, Cerseiella Park Avenue, Madison. I too would like to just compliment, I've been in Madison all my life, and these guys did a great, great job. The only thing I would talk about tonight is just a couple of things, is that this meeting, I wish the whole town could see it because it was a very positive and show what Madison does. And last meeting, I recommended that, or I asked why we're not on Cable 21, that the meetings are not televised. Again, I state that a lot of the old timers, you know, they're not into this computer stuff and all that. And I see them stop and shop, I see them around town. Sammy, how come they don't show those things no more? I like to watch it. So what I'm gonna suggest, so I don't go over my three minutes, Mayor, maybe a letter from you, from the Borough of Madison, to whoever's involved in this thing, that I think we made a deal with Cable or something, that we're supposed to be on this channel 21. That's just a suggestion.
Just, I won't take it, I'll even stop the clock for a second here. It is not at their end. We are having troubles with the server, and we're trying to work it through. We recognize that we do want people to be able to see us, and we will continue to push to get the servers working so we can, again, be on TV. So you can spread that word that...
So I can tell that to the old timers?
Yes, and we'll get it back up again.
Second thing is, at the last meeting, or the meeting before, I understand there's some suits pending in the future. Could we tell us about what's going on with these suits, like with the Board of Health? I think something about the DDC being sued or something. Can you explain about some of these suits pending?
Well, I'm not gonna talk about active litigation. There's many, many suits that the Borough is faced with, whether it's a slip and fall, whether it's a lawsuit brought against the Board of Health. We turn over the lawsuits to the insurance carrier. As you know, when you're a public entity, public entities get sued all the time. And we have insurance for it through the joint insurance fund and the municipal access liability carrier. I'm not gonna comment on specific lawsuits. Lawsuits are public records. People can look them up. But I can tell you that we actively and vigorously defend them and are, you know, very successful in defending the lawsuits that we're faced with.
Just the one I'm curious about, that DDC, I think you mentioned...
As again, Mr. S, I'm not gonna comment on any specific lawsuit.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? John?
John Morris, Bedford Court. Just about the aftermath of the storm, I'd just like to relate two things I saw last week. One was downtown. Order was kept, things were civil. The plan, I don't know if it was by circumstance or design, to get people gas quickly and efficiently, I think worked exceptionally well. And again, I don't know if it was by design or circumstances, but downtown was open relatively quickly. And I think that not only gave merchants a sense of normalcy, more importantly, gave people a warm place to go, congregate, you saw them in the trip and other places. And I think that was really huge, and I think that's really the essence of Madison. Another thing I saw in one of the neighborhoods, in particular, Silk Press Road, the road surface itself was clogged and devastated by, I think, seven giant healthy trees. It looked like a tornado went through there. I happened to be there when David Mainz and Mike Piana were there for the cleanup at the end of the day. They and their colleagues attacked it like lions. It was unbelievable. And somebody said to me, "I've had a cup of coffee all day, and I'm not complaining, but we're gonna keep it going." And I suppose every street that they'd met that was like that, and there was more than a few, they probably attacked it the same way, and they're probably doing it right now. And last I heard, Hill Press might be online tonight. It's unbelievable that that can be done in seven days. I just say this for record because it's just fantastic. And, you know, like, thank you, people, and elected officials, people of the Borough, and all the departments, and the police department for really, maybe you didn't hear too much about the police work because they did their job, an awesome job. Thank you very much.
And just to give you an idea of the planning process, and as John pointed out, the example of downtown being opened up. One of the reasons why that grid, or two reasons why that grid came up first. One, it's primarily underground utilities, so it's fairly easy to bring up. But the other was, just as John mentioned, a sense of normalcy. Downtown is reopened. Here was a resource that every resident in Madison had by powering up downtown. Pizza started flowing, the, you know, the stores were open, the merchants were back, and it gave life back to town. And so that's all part of this plan that is led by Bob Landrigan. Any other comments? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinances scheduled for reading have a hearing date set for November the 26th, 2012. We published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up the ordinance's first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said... ordinances by title.
Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand twelve, ordinance supplementing chapter thirty-four of the Code of the Borough of Madison entitled Police Department Establishing Promotion Procedures for the Ranks of Police Chief, Captain, Lieutenant, Sergeant, and Establishing a Procedure for Acting Appointments and Hiring of Police Officers.
I move ordinance thirty-seven dash two thousand twelve.
I'll second, Melissa.
All right, any discussion in addition to what was already had on us? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected and fall in the minutes.
I move consent, consent agenda resolutions are two sixty-two dash two thousand twelve through, or sixty-seven dash two thousand twelve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
You have no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, seven thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars ninety-six cents. Health and public assistance, one thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars sixty-one cents. Public works and engineering, one hundred and forty-eight thousand thirty-one dollars ninety-two cents. Community affairs, four hundred and eighty-six dollars thirty-seven cents. Finance and Borough Clerk, five million ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-one cents. And utilities, five thousand two hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, five thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars fifty cents. Total is five million two hundred and sixty-two thousand fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.